Everybody ready on left? You ready?
Yes.
If I could have your attention please, this time I'd like to call this meeting the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners's Order and of course our first order of business other than the state that all are here is our prayers and reflections and our prayer. And I'm going to turn the mic over to our vice chair Paul for the prayers and the prayer.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin our prayer tonight, I just wanted to mention that one of our schools, Jefferson Elementary School, today they wore green in remembrance of people that are challenged that have kidney issues, kidney problems, and they have a student at their tanner den and would ask all the commissioners to wear and staff to wear green ribbon tonight in remembrance of all those people that have kidney issues, but special type of tanner he's going to have some procedures done on Thursday. He'll join me in prayer. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. God, we ask you to keep our minds clear, keep our hearts open, and help us concentrate on the needs and the desires of the residents of Cleveland County. God, we live in an awesome county. You've blessed us so much, and we just ask you to guide our decisions tonight. Help us be wise stewards of your resources. And God, be with those in our community that are hurting, those families that have financial and physical and mental concerns. We just ask you to be able to each one of those people and just put your hand over them and just give them your grace. We ask all his things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let the dignable president who stand to be recognized. Stand one. Veterans president who stand to be recognized. Chris Krebs, county tax director.
Allison Henn, county tax director.
Chris Green, county tax commissioner. Your partner, Landmark.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get a little closer here. Our next agenda item is our... Oh, I'm going to get hurt. Our next item is our agenda and commissioners since we have the agenda together, curious to see a request for annual rotation of our orders and on the bill of duty. Item B, we will all cut the issue then. This time with an addition to the due.
I have a motion to seven general.
Touching.
Awesome.
Down, all the papers, we take the lane. And with our best sense of recognition, here you go. Anyone sign it?
Yes, sir.
And we'll turn to the special.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are six items on two to seven now. Items on the agenda for consideration this evening. Item A, if you can, December four, 2012, regular county commission meeting, December eleven, 2012 work session. Item B, tax collectors' monthly report for December 2012. At the end of December, county bill and personal property taxes were seventy-two point nine seven percent collected. Item C, tax assessors' monthly report for December 2012. At the end of December, there were payments of ten thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and supplements of nineteen thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars. Item D, budget amendment in Department of Social Services. Asking to budget between nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars in federal grant funds used in daycare services program. Item E, budget amendment in Department of Social Services. Asking to budget seventy-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars in federal grant funds to be used in home energy assistance program. Item F, budget amendment in Department of Social Services. Asking to budget three hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred twelve dollars in federal grant funds to be used in the home energy assistance program. Item U, annual certification of Cleveland County firefighter. This document certifies that Dewey Cook, Perry Davis, and Bobby Wharton are all employees of Cleveland County Fire Marshal's Office and Emergency Management Department and have received required training to be members of the North Carolina State Fire Association.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
I have one I have for the committee chair on the D, which is the annual certification of firefighters. Could we arrange, and when you do that, give the county manager office a lease and two sign up on that for the funding, two different fees, and one certifying that they are employees? Could that be done at the same motion or would that be different? I need to discuss it with you all. I think since he got started, you know, it has to be drawn to us each time.
Pass it away. We're all in this together and everybody.
Somebody's got to say.
Counselor.
Could everybody? I have just a question.
Any other questions? You know, all, we're giving a motion to approve. Motion approved, President. All. Hold this. Any more questions? You know, all, that would be great. Mayor Regina.
Mayor. In eighteen years, I've played up here and one of the biggest things that you'd like to do is this youth commission. We're glad to have you back to speak on the Cleveland County Commission. What, been eighteen years?
Been fifteen.
I was like, I don't know, sixteen years on you.
One lady was eighteen. Now we have right now a little less too for a terrible office. It's definitely just a blessing for me to be on this side of it, but it's a blessing for me to be on that side as well. So I'm just honored to be here tonight to report on Cleveland County Youth Commission because I'm an advocate for youth and I just believe that our pathway to a brighter future is to our youth. And so if we're going to have a future, we certainly can be proud of the group that we've got in place. It was twenty-three original students to join the commission and I don't think I have a little component, right? So we sorted out twenty-three members, twenty-one, something around there, and they're coming out of each one of the schools, they're coming out of all of our five schools, and we also asked to get representation from Thomas Jefferson, but at this court we do not have representation of him to be a state student probably in the future. Help us get some representation as well, and you see who's representing Cleveland County. And so we have our officers, and you're going to be able to meet the president tonight following this presentation. These students, I want you to know that when you hear talk about students not doing the right thing, there's no leadership, they're not talking about Cleveland County, they're talking about another county or whatever, because these have proven everything that I knew my way to be the truth. They conduct business just as you're sitting there tonight, Commissioner, they conduct business just like that. The lead in the chamber, they're very professional, the way that they handle themselves, and they come to the podium as I am tonight, and they speak to their officers with respect and dignity, and we're teaching them, you know, that's what we learned the same, and through this president, and you'll get right after you get to meet her, she's a hospital. She has done so many great things. She went to RISD, the NCAA SEC, and took over, took over, literally. She was the one who gave the reports, so we're doing great things for the commission. You see, she's careful, she's a bit, she's right on, and she probably, I, when she comes, when Alice finished with college, she'll probably end up in some state of, I don't know, I'm just planning, I'm just going to go ahead and say, I'm going to split it, that she probably will, not only Allen, but other students as well, just more students. In December, they started off their defense, their assets, they wanted to give back to the community, because that's who they are, that they're all about giving back to the community. And how wonderful it would be if grownups had the same mindset that youth have when it comes to, you know, how we give back and not always getting, but giving back. And so in December, Cleveland County, and then they went over the window and they donated some toiletries and different things that they thought would be a need to patients at the hospital. And then they went to that and took over the whole store, took over the restaurant. They went behind the, they were cooks, the guy in the black shirt, he is a part of our youth council, he's grand, and we found that not only did we have the students to serve it, but he even called their school, so he was back there cooking and serving the pancakes and doing all kinds of things. So a lot of towels came out that third. They looked nice and we appreciate youth commissioners for giving them their, you know, the money to purchase the T-shirts they wear when they're out, and they served you well, they wear these T-shirts, they're doing the corn shoes and everything, you can go and carry. And the other servers, like I said, they took over the complete fast restaurant, and then they were the waitresses and the waiters, and they even sat down and enjoyed some family time, and some of them got tips, a lot of them got tips, and that really helped them with their fundraiser because they knew, and then we have some community faces to show up and eat the food, so we appreciate the support. And then this is Ally, our president. Well, they had fun at that, and Ally will get to share with you some things they've done. I am proud and honored to have been with you guys and let this group have, soon we will be getting our claim of our new president, and we'll go forward with great things. I know I could do some great things with us, so Ally, I'm going to let you come now and present your commission. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Hough, and I'm a senior at Burton High School, and I have been so lucky to become the president of the Cleveland County Youth Commission this year. And to start off, I was in it last year, I was the only junior, and so we wanted to revendicate, totally do different things, and we were so fortunate that y'all bought us the shirt, we've never had anything like that before. And so we started off around July, when we meet every second Sunday here around three thirty, so that's a good one to do, like. And our first thing was, we decided to do service projects to give back to the community. And so we started off by going to Cleveland High and doing like toiletry drive and bringing canned foods, these things for the residents, and then we also went to Hostess and did the same thing, and we volunteered, and we actually met a lot of new people, and it's just really helped us broaden our specters of our community. And then finally, we wanted to do a fundraiser, we really wanted to give back to the community by that way. And so for about three months of planning, we have printed out the tickets, printed out flyers, and we distributed them to every member, we have twenty-three members, and so with everyone selling an average of ten tickets, we were so fortunate with our turnout at that. That day, we all worked, served, collected money, collected tips, which we were very fortunate for, and we ended up making around eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which was after we'd already paid back. So divided up within the five county high schools, that means a hundred and sixty-five dollars roughly will get to go to each school. And next week, I didn't feel fortunate enough to take it to take it to every school and handle it. That will be fit for students in need, and so will even the counselors and fellow principals take them myself. But just a little background from this, as Ray mentioned, I was able to go to the North Carolina Youth Council this year, I had never been to anything like it, and it was amazing. I actually received my book earlier this week from there, and it made me remember everything that happened. And pretty much, we just learned about political issues on our local government and states. I don't actually love presidents and so many things in my school now, and I'll never forget that week because I got to meet many commissioners and I made a lot of new friends that I still connect with, and also was allowed me to bring back new ideas to the youth council. And our next project, we'll be able to deliver all this money, and we're helping to invite the principals to one of our meetings, and I do wish to continue our service projects and so I just, you know, and thank you so much, man, we really appreciate it.
Just talking about Ally, one of the things that, we just left NCAA SEC now, they call me back to be on history, committee or whatever it is, but during the committee work, one of the things that came out and obvious was that the Cleveland County Youth Council was busy and was innovative, and they had done all this work. And so as I presented the youth council initiative to the board, they want to come and take a meeting of the youth council, put it on NCAA SEC's website, and use Ally, probably, as a board, and to use our youth council as a representative youth council across the county, across the state. I know Mr. Warhart from New Hanover County looked at me during the meeting and said, "I want what you've got." So I guess that means they want a youth council like Ally. So thank you very much for approving this youth council because for those of you who not know it in the audience, that this is an approved board, the youth council is approved board, and they have to apply just like any other board, as students come to our commission. So we're excited about that, we're excited about the future of this commission, and I appreciate you so much and everything that you do and have to take.
Mary.
Yes. No one else?
Wonder if it's possible, maybe, that we can, well, thank you first for continuing to work with you. Secondly, after four, if you're with me. Could we get a picture of you and Ally and see Nick Carey maybe order a few articles in Tennessee, Carolina?
Okay, I will. Maybe you're a little bad, yeah. He'll fit you.
Yeah, I'm just married about two weeks.
I remember when you first told the word, a lot of work, you know, you can see it's all. This is a future coming too, so it continues and the train they've got, so we're looking at the youth commissioners, this group, a lot of different things in the world, so, and they've managed to it out on the rest, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
I might say, Mary, I appreciate you, what you're doing, the work that you're doing with the youth council, and, you know, I did, I did have a chance to come over to Bats, where y'all had that very professional, Ally did a great job, very well organized, everybody that was very friendly, having a good time. I think y'all will be successful in anything that you try to do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ally is a natural. I never did anything like it. You said you like that was something, you should have been at NCAA SEC.
Well, we better be tight, though, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our first case is twenty-nine thirteen Philadelphia Road. The property owner, George W. Surratt, and he lives in Jamaica, New York. So I haven't been able to meet Mr. Surratt. This property is burned and of course abandoned, and the neighbors complain about the conditions, surrounded property. And so we're coming to you tonight with a request to demolish the remaining structure and clean up the property.
Any other questions? You're not having a motion?
So move forward to now?
Motion to approve the receiver.
Clean it up.
Second. Motion forward, second. All, all favorably, great, right?
I believe the next property is Cody Road. We received a complaint about this property back in February of 2010. I had difficulty locating an owner for a while, but we were able to locate that in March of 2012, and property owner is Donnie Ray Williams. Are they, anybody in the audience here for that? Bill, is this, this is Xavier?
Xavier.
So, this is, you said Cody?
This is Xavier.
You said Cody.
We're in both cases.
I want to, yeah. All that's it? Want to go back? Cody Road is another burned and abandoned structure. Property owner is Lila May Clark, and this was also in reference to complaints in that neighborhood. And we've had hearings and certain notices, and are coming to you tonight with a request to demolish and clean up this property. Come in to clean it up?
Yes, I'd like to. Second. Over. Any questions? You know, all favorably, great, right?
And now we're going to repair that. Property owner, Donnie Ray Williams. Again, complaint from neighbors. It's not been burned or anything, it's just been abandoned and purchased by Mr. Williams. None of the ways intentions are, have spoken with him, his sister has called in about the property, just to let us know that the letter did reach him. We posted the order on the dwelling and have gotten a response back from the property owner. So we're going to you tonight for a request to demolish and clean up that property. John, do they have to respond? Uh, no, yeah. You did say that they have to respond. No. I'm talking with the sister, and so I know that they're aware of it. Just no intentions to do anything with it.
Do we need to act with the owner that you said not getting a response to them?
Yeah, I would feel about getting into demolishes those letters.
The first complaint was twenty-ten, you said, right?
Yes. It would have been dealing with it since February of 2010.
Any other questions? Question, call.
I'll make the question.
Looking to that one, please. I'm looking. Question. Sorry. Over. Go ahead. You know, all favorably, great, right?
With this question, I would always send the owner a notice of this meeting so they can tell them to respond to any questions that you might have of the owner. No response.
Nick, the gentleman is...
Good, Chair, will Nick make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I think they just probably put, in doing this demolition, and he is in front of a five or two contact people who are with him when it gets to this stage, brother been parried down, he don't look brother help, the owners of property take care of their own problem, but when it comes to this stage, he has no other alternative, and that's what we have to, as such, to give him authority to go in and do the demolition. I'm for sure, man down there tomorrow said he takes good, he'll give him opportunity to do it, but not he's going to proceed with it, but that's just to verify that it's not just a cut and dry thing. And process, a couple of years ago, we called you a fine agent, Doug.
Next gentleman is the resident, honor of the public services, Debbie Inclary.
Her resolution, our, is the public services, Debbie Inclary, in North Carolina House Representative and Senator. Whereas Debbie Inclary, a native of Cleveland County, was elected in nineteen ninety-four and served seven terms in the North Carolina House of Representatives and two terms in the North Carolina Senate. And whereas Debbie Inclary's interest in government service began with private business where she was the owner of a radio station. And whereas Debbie Inclary, being a champion for people on limited income, was well-known and received awards for her work regarding the expansion of home care and adult care services and the protection of services for the mental health community. And whereas Debbie Inclary's concern for youth safety landed her passing legislation with a graduated driver's license, which allows novice drivers to be thoroughly introduced to driving by first allowing them to drive under the safety conditions with supervision before moving on to an unrestricted license. And whereas Debbie Inclary has been recognized in several national publications, including the New York Times, Washington Post, and Time and Parents Magazine for her leadership with highway safety legislation. And whereas, for two consecutive years, Debbie Inclary was recognized as Regency Law Enforcement Legislator of the Year after passage of her legislation which increased the penalty for assault on a law enforcement officer with deadly weapons. And whereas Debbie Inclary took a personal interest in her constituents, offering immediate assistance to people in need, many times provided from her own pocket. And whereas, the betterment of the people of Cleveland and Rockford counties has always superseded any personal or political agenda. Now therefore, the commissioners of Cleveland County wish to express their appreciation for the public service given and contributions made by Debbie Inclary by naming a two-mile stretch of Highway seventy-four which is extending across the county line, the Senator Debbie A. Inclary Highway.
Thank you. Any comments about the resolution?
I think the resolution is very important. She has helped us out in a lot of cases, and she's been there with the media on a lot of projects, and she's gone across, but I think for her work over the years, that's a small tribute that we can try to get done forward.
Commissioner, let's switch it up, if you see the resolution, it has all our signatures on the way out of the word of the resolution. Um, Commissioner, let's let you know that if you see the resolution, it has all our signatures, uh, this is a way out of the word of the resolution. Let's go to the house, the resolution will look, uh, you know, beside of the other thing. But I prefer everyone here to act and sign the resolution, so I'm here to be asking you to give it an approval, so. Now I'm asking for one, if the resolution can be approved, if it goes to the U.P., if it's a regulation.
I don't like that, lady.
That's my gun.
Any other questions? You're not all paid, please raise your hand. Do I have a central office before? Or your last, your last paper meeting right there?
Uh, I'd just like to remind everybody, Thursday afternoon, leaving, uh, Grand Center at four-thirty. So everybody, uh, for public announcement, concerning all of the things, so we encourage you, come if you're ready.
We've, we've had a couple of things, uh, Mitch Paul, nobody found for a while, it was swearing in, I've had a couple of these talks, a couple of years that we had pending in the county, we've got new results from them. Uh, we got pretty busy, okay, coming up in the future. Uh, one comment I'd like to make, and I'm glad the president here will last and put a favor for me, if you make them so choose. I've had several calls over the last couple of weeks on closing the collection sites on Sunday. And we know why the collection site was closed on account of all the matters. We did not want to pour on collection fees, so the only thing was, is to close on Sunday. But over a dozen pieces called, they're willing to pay extra to get the collection site open again on Sunday. So I'd ask you to start runs, do different polls to see what the community thinks. It would be nice if the store could run a poll to see how many people are willing to take extra to keep these polling sites open on Sunday, to give us as a commissioner an idea of what to do. Because when we chose not to raise the fees at this time, then we felt like that the citizens could not afford any additional fee. They're willing to live on their own, and I personally think it's not a different situation, is that suitable with the commissioner?
To ask her for that, if you would do it?
No, come on down in a minute, people are worried. Other than that, yes, that's it.
Well, it's been, uh, this couple of weeks, first year, uh, and I think one of the big things is, I know, I'm sure you, you mentioned it many times, is, uh, the way we can get things done by partnerships and bridge partnerships. So, um, Commissioner Osh, I did have a chance to, to visit with, um, both the House and some, uh, to see the swearing in there. Made a lot of good contacts, all with our, our most delegation, but also major delegations. Uh, I attended swearing ins of, of some of the delegations in their, in their respective counties as well, uh, going up to Lincoln County, a couple of other places. So, um, I think we've got, uh, in place right now, we've got a good, a good delegation, um, that is willing to, uh, to do a lot to help Cleveland County. Uh, they already have been, and, uh, but we definitely got their ear. Um, so we're, I'm excited about what, uh, what you've got, first thing has for Cleveland County.
If I could just address a question earlier, thanks, dear. Um, after having an opportunity to review the SACH and review the, you know, application for certification, it appears that the application actually has to be submitted to the board for approval within the, uh, mail, which is fine, as it doesn't need on behalf of the board, so the board actually have to provide it. Thank you.
Ronnie, I would like to mention that in the, in our intended Essentials of County Government workshop last week at Ashville, and it was very, uh, informative, and, uh, as a new county commissioner, it was a very good workshop, done very well, uh, the, uh, food from, uh, Chatfield.
Did whatever they had, they don't, uh, fall. And then, uh...
Totally. Uh, at the time I left, it was, uh, about one o'clock when I left, it made it up to, uh, out, five, five minutes. They're also calling a lot of awareness, they have a lot of, uh, different vendors right there as well, um, that were offering free, uh, services, you know, for adopted deaths. It was, uh, it was a good event, definitely built awareness, to lead for adoption.
We have two different, we have two names, one was, um, one was, and, uh, they have magazines. One, I can tell you, I've made all these pictures, the stories of them. And one place that we were talking to, uh, one of the, the workers who had adopted terrible. And we, it's our, a couple of years ago, we shipped adopted, uh, it's called, it's very, very busy. They have a knit magazine, um, and that, well, a little bit, but, uh, one of the biggest issues right now, where you're facing is specialization, getting interviews for other meetings. He's probably the one to, to, uh, there, he's put on that.
Can you guys hear us just a tad more? We can hardly hear you out there.
Sorry, dear?
We can hardly, we can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're speaking on yourself, but we really can't hear what you're saying.
Okay.
You said something about a dog or something.
The, uh, the rabid clinic, I've got here, and it did, uh, help us there together, and I think they had nine hundred. That was vaccinated, it was rabid shot at the Health Department. And what I think Sam's talking about doing in moving the locations for the next site, since they had liking. Kingdale High School, Burns High School, the Health Department may be having, she had a high school to get, you know, more out in the area. So he, he's gonna take a look at that, but there's nine hundred.
Uh, Buck will be having, uh, surgery, uh, next week to repair a valve in his heart. Uh, and, uh, after the surgery, I think he'll be out for about, uh, six weeks, uh, a good break from the surgery.
Okay.
We stay with that.
Okay, we should like this time, like how, any motions to reset the decision on QG table for a second? At five o'clock, we'll have a session, we have a meeting chamber, so. All, session, discussion, vision, comments. Make sure you get you in the house, and period, and leave, and give all the favor, uh, please, that's it, please, right here. Thank you.